You all rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands on nation about the visit of the British.
Welcome everyone to the lower Gwinnett regular public meeting. The Board of Supervisors for Wednesday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. The Board of Supervisors for the minutes did meet an exec session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of personnel, real estate, and litigation. Want to open it up first a public comment. Anyone's here for public comment, you just come up and if you could state your name and address.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dale Moss and I live at five oh eight Hobby Horse Hill. In Lower Gwinnett. And have been there for thirty-three years. We were the first people to move into whole of the states. So we've seen a lot of transition in this period.
Oh, is it? You just got to, if you, if you can pick it up and hold it so that people.
Want me to go like that?
Yeah.
Is that better? Okay. Whatever you want, Mimi. You got it. Yeah, well, after, after living here for thirty-three years and I've been retired for the past eleven. I have an opportunity to walk two Labrador Retrievers twice a day. And as I do, which is always a joy. When I do, I do take my life in my hands some days, walking on Gwinnett Avenue and Gypsy Hill Road. And it's, you know, there has, there comes a point in time when there's a tipping point. And that tipping point came a few, a few weeks ago, when there was an issue on Gypsy Hill Road. That I have spoken to the police with and Paul and his team were very helpful. And we've reached a reasonable solution with that. But that just, that just makes this case even more important. And I'd like to just go over a couple of things, if I may. There is an S curve on Gypsy Hill that everyone's aware of. And then when you finish that S curve and you're on your way to Penland Bluebell Pike. There is a one-lane bridge between you and the Pike. And it's a sprint from that point to that next stop sign, irrespective of the fact that there's a one-lane bridge. Now, I think we're one of the few townships that does not have sidewalks, and I am not advocating for sidewalks. But I am suggesting that in a township where we have speed limits like we do in other townships who do have sidewalks. It is something to consider, and I can tell you this. When you're on a street that's somewhere between eighteen and twenty feet across. And you have a suburban coming one way, that's maybe five or six feet wide and usually six or seven thousand pounds. And another car coming the other way and you have two Labrador Retrievers. There's not a lot of room. And, you know, even in these times of inflation. If I got a nickel for every time I've been cursed out by people who think I don't belong on that road. I'd be, I'd be a hell of a lot richer than I am today. And it's, it's just not right. There are two things I say to people as they go by invariably, especially when it's close. I say, please, slow down. And the other is show respect. I don't, I don't think we're asking for a lot, and this is a crazy world that we live in. I know that. And we can't change everything, but sure as heck in a, in a place like Lower Gwinnett, which is a, it's a real blessing to live here. It is. And, and to have something so askew. Now, part of the issue is every time, you know, I would chat with the police over the years because I've seen people go flying by. And when I say flying by, I'm talking flying by. Right? They say, we, we're not allowed, and they're right, they're not allowed to use radar. Okay. And the other thing is we're the only state in the Union where that's. You know, somewhere along the line, you ask the question, is everybody else wrong and we're right? But that's a separate issue.
It's above our pay grade.
Yes, it is. However, we have to ask ourselves, what can we do inside of what we have? You know, and, and maybe why we can't use radar to track somebody or give them a summons, not that I'm even suggesting. Maybe we can, that the key here is getting data.
Yeah.
The data of what time of the, the day is, is this happening? Where is the speed? And it's not just on, on Gypsy Hill Road, it's on Gwinnett Avenue, because that kind of goes into a perpendicular T junction. And I, I live in those, in, in one of those communities and. And I, there was one time on Gypsy Hill Road, I'm walking the dogs and some, some happened to be a woman, but. Goes flying by in a convertible. And I say to her, I said, please slow down. And she said to me, I'm late for work. And I said, get up earlier. Really? The, the difference in, if you're going twenty-five miles an hour faster from that point to the stop sign is, is seconds in terms of your, of your elapsed time. What are you gaining? Part of the issue here is that everybody's honest as long as they think someone's looking. And they know no one's looking.
So to that, to that point. We have a lot of, you're not the only one who makes this, you know, has, raises this concern and beyond your neighborhood. So we do those, we check their speed limit signs posted. When we're looking. Inevitably. We find that there's no cause for any improvements because we are looking. I hear, I hear, look, I live right off of McKean Road. When we put, when we put the traffic, the speed things posted, everybody's going around thirty miles an hour. When it's gone, Speedway. That's, I, that's, that's the problem we have.
And, and somehow or other, we're smart enough people among us to figure out something.
Yeah.
You know, and, and the other thing is if you think that twenty-five miles an hour on our local streets is okay. Our thirty-five miles an hour on, on Gypsy Hill Road, which is what it's posted. Is okay, be in a parking lot sometimes and have an accident going less than five miles an hour. And I guarantee, I guarantee. I think Gypsy Hill is the state road. And, and you know, this falling in between state and county and local. Really.
State gets upset if you try to do anything on their road.
Well, I, I, I still think this is about collecting data, when, when there's empirical data. It's, it, the case is easier to prove. And unless we have that now. You know, I, I was just kidding around the other day. I was looking on Amazon and you can buy, I could buy a radar gun, you know?
Well, we have ways of doing this. I mean, we do this all the time in the township and I don't. No, it's not in this, that, and we'll get a report of.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we've done it on Brookside Avenue, we've done it on McKean Road, we've done it in a lot of places.
There has been one on Gypsy Hill. I live right off of Eder Lane, so I see, I, my dog's probably barking like crazy when you walk by with your two dogs. But I run Gypsy Hill, I run.
You run in the morning, you have, because there are some ladies who run in the morning with the lights on.
I don't do that, no.
And, and I, I say, braver than I.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I run during the day and I sprint, you know, Gypsy Hill, because it's.
You know what it's like.
I know what it's like.
It's, and, and you know, it, it's a complicated cockpit for a driver these days. It really is. I mean, it's satellite, it's, it's temperature, it's your phone, it's a cup of coffee, it's a donut. It's all you have to be is distracted by a second or two. And you know what happens to, I don't know if anybody here has ever seen somebody get hit by a car. I have. I saw somebody get hit at probably thirty-five miles an hour and it killed the person. It's a horrible thing to see. And there's no reason why it should happen here. None.
Well, let us collect the data and.
No, I want to first thank you for coming in front of us and talking about, as the owner of two Labradors where I take my life in my hands when I walk my dogs every time too, and it has nothing to do with speeders. So I appreciate the fact that you, that you came in front of us and shared this, because it is something that we're hearing much more of and. You know, it's something that we're kind of grappling with, because like Mike was talking about, we put the speed. We put the, you know, the equipment up so that we can track it. And when we do that, then there's, there's no issue. And as soon as it's gone. And people are back to fearing for their life when they're doing something like walking their dogs or walking school or just walking.
So, so in that case, if we collect data, how is that gonna help us maybe?
We have to have, we have the baseline. We have to be able to at least figure out, is there a problem?
I know that our traffic engineer is with us, and because it is a state road, I know that PennDOT has procedures for them to evaluate it. So I just want to briefly see if you have any insight that you could give us as to what those processes are. You might need the microphone, I'm sorry.
Chad's here tonight.
Chad is here. We missed you the last meeting, Chad.
So people, so people have sold me. So yeah, the, getting back to the collecting of the data, we can work in conjunction with the police department. There's potentially different equipment that we can bring to the table that's maybe a little more discreet. To collect the speed data than the radar signs that, that the police department has. So in special instances, we can, we can chip in and help out in that regard. You are correct, it, it is a PennDOT road, they do have guidelines. Or, you know, that's established by them for, for what's considered a significant speeding issue and then potential. Things to mitigate it. So first is collecting the data, defining what the problem is and then, and then going from there.
And I think we have to think of it from a pedestrian point of view, that. When, when you have a suburban and you have another vehicle, there's so little room on that road. And, and we're, for pedestrians, whether I'm with it, I'll, I'll move over. My fear is sometimes when you move over too much. They don't see you at all. And if you think that's okay, it's not, because if you look at the edge of a lot of those roads, there's a lot of rut. And those ruts are caused by, by cars that have gone off into the side. I, I'm not suggesting we have sidewalks, I'm not suggesting we have wider roads. I am suggesting we have to think of something now. I didn't come here tonight just throwing this, I, I got a problem and, you know. But I did come with, with some thoughts, I'll share them with you and then I'll get the heck out of here. And I thank you for this time. One is better signage. If you look at the S curve. The S curve, you know, be, if, if going away from Penland Pike, there's actually a fifteen mile an hour sign before you get to the, the one-lane bridge. You're going through the curve, there's, it says fifteen miles an hour. Okay? It's a small sign, nobody ever sees it. Somebody was going by the other day. And I said, I go like this, please slow down. He says, hey dude, I'm going twenty-five. I said, it's fifteen. In that S curve area is fifteen, but also in that you'll see a confusing sign that says thirty-five. So we got to make it easier for people. One is about signage. Second is about getting data. The third is perhaps maybe getting some paint stripes to be, you know, I, I was driving on Brights Lane the other day and I see where they have that bicycle thing. Hey, great, I think it's great. Is, have we learned anything from that that can be applied to the one-lane bridge? People don't think of it as a one-lane bridge. And, and part of that problem is they play chicken with each other. And if I have, if I'm in the middle and I got the two dogs. That, that's when I hear the choice words. So maybe painting some stripes there, you know, we, we need to help them a little bit. The, the other thought was perhaps putting a, like a, a walkway and a little bridge over the creek there, the Willow Creek. Allah, what they've done that runs parallel with Penland Pike, you know, that goes down by the, the Little League Fields.
Oh, like the gravel pad?
Yeah, I, I'm not suggesting, I'm, I'm just coming that, that's in the consideration set. And, and the other one, you know, is, is lowering the speed. And, you know, for, you know, the police can't do anything, you know. It's six miles an hour, you know, so the speed limit's not twenty-five or not, or not thirty-five, it's thirty-one or forty-one. And people start to know that over time. You know, they, and they actually think it's ten miles an hour more, so. There's a lot of damage that could be done and it's unnecessary, you know, how they drive all, but. How they drive on the roads, I'm not so much worried about. How they drive on the roads when pedestrians are on the road? I think everybody should worry.
Absolutely. Chad, can we, on, like, on a PennDOT road, are we permitted to do any traffic calming measures before and in terms of like? You know? Painting lines or adding, you know, arrows indicating the curve or signs that say slow down or any, are you able to do anything when it's not your road?
You can, you still have to go through their permitting and approval process. If the township wants to take the initiative. On so, something like this from our experience, the department's gonna ask that the township pay for it and maintain it. Once it's in, I did want to point out that we have worked with staff on a couple of occasions over the past few months. Because we, the township had received some complaints about. Traffic control at the intersection of Gypsy Hill and Huntsey Drive, so we have submitted requests to PennDOT. To evaluate that area, they have something that's called Low Cost Safety Improvements Program. That's actually been used on a couple of other locations within the township. Where they've implemented what you've, what you just mentioned in terms of improved signs and pavement markings. So we've, we've requested on a couple of occasions that this area be included in that program. We haven't gotten a positive response back yet, just because. They get requests throughout the region and the funds in the program are limited sometimes. And the availability of it is on a year-to-year basis, so sometimes. You have to wait a little bit of time before they'll consider it for that program, so, you know, we'll continue to stay in touch with them. In, in that regard as well.
So is that program strictly related to the funding available to do those improvements or just permission to even do those things?
They'll pay for the improvements, sometimes on a case-by-case basis. They'll ask for a little bit of assistance from the municipality in terms of either. Preparing the construction plan to do the improvements. Or, you know, just simply working through them, through their own internal process to do the evaluation and review the recommendations that they come up with.
Does that involve even just making clearer signage? Like the fifteen mile per hour signage being a little bit more distinctive and clear, that would be in that program?
Correct. So a, a couple examples recently of the program. One is at the intersection of. Evans and Plymouth Road. Evans comes in a little bit of a skewed Plymouth Road, they did some signing and pavement markings there because. There were concerns over making turning movements because of the angle of Evans Road and sight distances. Related to the geometry of Plymouth Road. That was something that was done recently. Another one that's on their schedule, but it hasn't been completed yet is on. The S curve on Evans Road, north of Summeytown Pike. Just south of Welsh Road. So it's a little bit of a similar searchwa, situation in terms of the S curve and, and they worked that into their program. So yeah, it's, it's more the signing pavement marking type of improvements.
Are there any, are there any plans to, to widen that little bridge?
Not that we're aware of now. And that would be a PennDOT bridge, and they're, they're on the bridge. In addition to the road, there's nothing currently on the tip. To replace the bridge, there is a weight restriction, I believe, on it currently.
Mr. Moss, did you have any questions?
No, I didn't. I just wanted to say thank you.
No, thank you so much for coming. And we're gonna, we're gonna follow up with you. So you'll probably hear from staff and let, let you know what the next steps are and how we're proceeding.
And I'll make myself available and, and help in whatever way I can.
Okay. And if you have questions, please continue to come and reach out to us. You don't have to come in person. I know that can become for some, you can come on Zoom or you can just send us an email. And as we're going through this process where we're doing our comprehensive plan, we're talking about walkability, we're talking about what are our priorities as a community. And walkability came up and safety and pedestrians. And so if you want to come out, you'll probably hear about those events in the future, please come out and, and share.
And we have a way to contact you, right? Mimi has all your information?
I do.
Okay.
I do.
Okay, great.
But I'm intimidated by that.
Yeah. I'd be concerned.
One comment. When you just mentioned walkability. And when we were working with the state. And so a lot of things that Chad just talked about, that's all for vehicles, signage, markings. It's nothing to do with people walking on the road. And if you're calling Norris Town Road, when we were gonna connect the trails and we wanted to do something under the bridge. PennDOT does not want you walking on their roads. They don't want. Forgive me, you to walk your dogs on their road.
Right.
And when we do all these data. That we're gonna do. There won't be a checkbox, do people walk on the road? PennDOT doesn't consider it a walkable road.
That's not a factor they're gonna consider, whether it's walk.
And, and maybe Chad might add to that, but that has always been my experience. It's accident data. It's speed data for the, for the correct speed limit. It's not walkability.
That's just somebody who's hit that, wasn't it?
Yeah, in, in terms of PennDOT's perspective, when it comes to pedestrian safety, that the chief is correct. Walking along the edge of the road or providing a wider shoulder for people to walk on, that's, that's really not considered. A viable safety alternative for pedestrians. It's providing sidewalk or a walking trail. That get, get the pedestrians off of the roadway and having some separation. Between the two, that's their perspective on providing safe pedestrian facilities.
And I would understand, you know, in general, in, in the state, but in. In a township like ours where equestrians are treated with such high regard, where there are miles of trails. Okay, many of them unused and please don't take away that they had so much charm. Surely we can find something, some kind of accommodation. We're better than this.
No, I agree.
Yeah, but you, you, the, the, the real crux of the problems, you've been here thirty-plus years, you see how we've grown. And that's the big problem, more houses, more cars, and that's. More, it's an embarrassment of riches that we have people who want to live here.
Yeah, this is the consequence. More people walking dogs.
Yeah.
More people running along a, a Gypsy Hill Road and it's hard for me to think that we can't find a way to.
We're gonna, we're gonna work on it.
We are.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No.
I'm sure I know that. She's very nice.
Absolutely, absolutely. You don't have to ask permission.
No judges here.
But I mean, it's not a good habit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. But while we're on this subject though. The Schoolhouse Road is also a very dangerous place. Because kids walk on that street to go to the school bus in the morning before daylight. And, and if you turn in the street there, you may not see them. There's no streetlights or anything. There's no sidewalk. The kids walk in the street, so. I would appreciate if, if there could be something to, to, to address that situation. And, and that was raised to me, that's been raised to me a number of years ago, and I've also experienced it myself, so. Another. Sore point. That's all.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comments? None online? Okay. So moving on to building and zoning. We have before us Resolution twenty twenty-three dash six, the preliminary final subdivision approval of lot line change of five forty-one station road. And there was a memo included in our manager's report kind of outlining the resolution. And the conditions, this recommended action. By staff. Was the approval of the five forty-one station lane lot line adjustment plan with the conditions noted in the blow resolution and. Basically the wards of five forty-one station lane. They're requesting approval of minor lot line adjustment plan involving two residential parcels located in a residential zoning district. Proposed plan is to convey approximate point one, seven acres. Lot one to lot two. And the plan is for conveyance only, no construction is proposed and the plan was recommended for approval by our planning commission. At their January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Included in this is a map as well as the resolution and a recommendation from us, from our engineer. Are there any questions from the board? And then are there any questions from the public? Seeing now we have before us this proposed Resolution twenty twenty-three dash six, like to make a motion for preliminary and final approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, we have general business, transportation improvements and, and there was a recap of our latest plan, so I think our. Traffic engineer is gonna kind of go over some of the latest plans related to transportation improvements. Spring House Intersection, McKean Road pedestrian improvements as well as that study.
Thank you. So yeah, we're gonna give an update on some upcoming projects. The first one is Phase Two, the Spring House Intersection. And if you haven't met Stephanie Butler from our office before, Stephanie's been. McMahon's Project Manager throughout all the Spring House Intersection. Work, so she's gonna give an overview of the improvements and schedule. And some other points of interest that have come up during some recent meetings.
Good evening. I think I was here maybe six months ago, did a brief discussion on the Stormwater Maintenance Agreement. So anyway, so I myself is the project manager. We do have Sean Hughes, who will be our, our lead inspector for the project when it goes into construction. And we also have a PennDOT liaison, Sean Finan, who we've been dealing with on these final stages for the. For the project and getting ready for, for going out to bid. So the final permitting and approvals. I think it's the next, next slide. You can keep going, Jamie, please. Thank you. So we're in this final permitting and approval stage. In December, we were issued the PennDOT Highway Occupancy Permit. And in February, we're, we're expecting the county highway occupancy permit at any time now. They have all the documentation that they need, so we're awaiting issuance of that permit. Once we get that, which should be any day. We're gonna move into advertisement bidding and construction, so we have a tentative advertisement date, middle of February next week. Which we will post the project bid documents on PennBid and that bidding period will take us into March. Following that, once we receive bids, we'll be back here for a recommendation to award. And then we will move into construction, which will hopefully start in April of two thousand and twenty-three. We do show a year out to March of two thousand and twenty-four. I will say it's essentially one construction season. But the year is there to accommodate the construction, any punch list items, any equipment procurement. That may, may take a little extra time, so that is why there was a year. I don't think you will see. Actual activity for a full year out there at the intersection. But there's a lot that goes into it. This next slide is just an overview of the project. It's been on the website in the past, it's really hasn't changed since it was posted on the website before. Briefly, the yellow areas indicate the roadway widening for the additional travel lanes. Green areas are what we call temporary construction easements. Orange is sidewalk and trail, but generally the whole area is within the project limits. Next slide, please. So as we move into construction, I wanted to just briefly touch on what you're gonna see out there. On the upper left-hand side, I call out Stage One, so the pink area is essentially the first phase of construction. That's what we are designating the contractor to start with. That is the western limit on the westbound side of Summeytown Pike. Moving into Stage Two, you'll see on the right-hand side at the, the top part of the page, again, it's the westbound side. From the intersection leading up to the shopping center access. Stage Three, they'll flip to the eastbound side and which will be the widening for the right turn lane. As they approach the intersection, and then finally Stage Four in the blue is the widening along Norris Town Road. They're separated by stages, that does not mean that they cannot be worked on concurrently. As long as the contractor can maintain traffic throughout the area, which they're required to do.
They can ask me a question?
Sure.
And I ask him every time this is presented. Um, the Norris Town Road portion of it, stage four, I guess.
Yes.
Will that involve any tree removal?
Can we go to the next slide?
Ah, I anticipated. I'm sorry, I was a little ahead of myself.
I knew it was coming and I will get to Norris Town Road actually on the next slide, but I want to work from left to right, so. Uh, the, you'll see on the left-hand side, um the first green area up where the gas lines cross the road, there's widening there as we drop the lane. Um, so what I did is pulled the pictures from those locations. Um, and you can see the vegetation that is pretty close to the road at that location with the widening and the grading that has to happen, there is some vegetation removal um that's happening within the right-of-way along that section. It's mostly um shrubbery, there is probably two trees within that area that's in the right-of-way that will that will be taken down for the for the widening to happen. Moving down um towards the intersection on the eastbound side uh where the picture shows the fence. Um, that's an area for stormwater control, so there is a uh stormwater measures going in in that location, again, within the township right-of-way. So there will be some removal of some vegetation at that location as well. Um, and the next slide, please. On Norris Town Road, um starting at the intersection, uh the picture on the upper left where the mast arm is today. Uh, that is going to have some removal with the uh widening that's happening. Um, you'll see uh the mast arm is essentially going to go back in that same general location, but it will be further back. Um, so that is some vegetation that's going to be adjusted or taking taken out while for the widening. Um, the next arrow is pointing to uh the utility lines. Uh, but it happens to be in the area where there is widening, but it there there's there's curb and pavement, but it's not necessarily widening. Um, so there is no tree removal at that location. And then finally, the third picture on the bottom, you'll actually see there's a new utility pole that was put in uh within the last year. That's the new utility pole location, those lines are on that facility. Uh, there are some that still have to be other utilities that have to be moved off of the old pole onto the new pole. The reason that was reset or relocated is just for grading purposes, so there may be some additional grading that happens up or down to accommodate the curb in that area. Uh, but the pole is set where it is going to be in the future. Um, so there is no trimming of those trees behind, I think uh those are the trees that you're speaking of. Um, those trees are outside the right-of-way, we are not, there is no plans at all to affect those trees, and I think this demonstrates with the pole. Um, you'll s- demonstrates that they're they are out of the limit of disturbance and out of the limit of work.
The first picture, the one at the top left.
Yes.
When you say removal of vegetation.
Mm hmm.
Let's add on, no.
Um, well, you'll see where the trail is in that picture.
Yes, it's just that's the trail that's coming out of the woods, right?
Yeah, so that trail is going to be um basically redone in that area because of the widening, right? So um where that mast arm is, and you can see the trees kind of overhanging where the mast arm is. Um, that mast arm has to be moved back, so there is trimming and removal that's happening again within the right-of-way of that area. If you look at the plan view at the bottom of the blue arrow, if you come down a little bit, Jamie, right in that area. The dark line is the right-of-way line, so you'll see there's a there's a few trees right close to the right-of-way line, but inside the right-of-way right there. Um, those are primarily the ones that are going to be trimmed. Um, and affected by the grading in that area. If they don't have to come down, they won't come down, but they're within the right-of-way, so that's really what's going to dictate. Um, our limit of work, our contours are essentially going right up to the right-of-way line at that location for the widening. And you can tell there's a little bit of an embankment there, so there is some catching up that we have to do uh to tie back in.
Will will there be along that right-of-way, will there be digging um excavation?
Yes, for the widening. Mm hmm.
So I just wanted to confirm, you said the trail will be moved?
The trail is essentially going back in a very similar location. It's just that because of the grading, because we're we're widening the road and there's going to be um a section of barrier, I'll say, to catch the grade, right? And there'll be, the trail will go back in that location, but because there's going to be widening done and impacts to that area, it needs to be re-refinished, I'll say.
You you are going to take out trees?
At that location, yes, but not further down where the poles are already moved, there's two poles that are being moved at the intersection um or near the intersection, so if the highlighted green area on the plan.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of trees in the first half of the highlighted green, those are not impacted, it's the second little section right in there. Um, where we have to widen the road to accommodate the additional lane.
So, can Jamie, can you zoom in a little bit um on the plan view? Um, maybe it'll be to give a little bit clearer picture.
So see the light gray on that plan? See the, see where the green is? I don't have the pointer, but and and just below that is light gray, so that's new pavement, right? So today, that's not paved, that's where that utility pole is lying in that picture, right? So so there is widening that is happening there, that is the additional widening to accommodate the lane. Then there will be a new curb line and or single face barrier wall that's happening to be able to catch the existing ground behind that. Um, so essentially, the trail is going back in the same location, but the grade is diff- the 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 elevation is slightly different. So there is work happening in that area and the vegetation that has extended out into the right-of-way needs to be trimmed. And in some cases, the root system may may be affected, it would need to be removed if it's in the right-of-way, we're not doing anything outside the right-of-way line. So you can kind of see on that plan, um Jamie, if you kind of go to fifty-four plus fifty and then see the numbers on the baseline and fifty-four plus fifty. Uh, the tick mark, if you go up, there's a C, right? Keep going, there's a C that you can kind of no, go up the page, that no. Can I? So fifty-four plus fifty, that little tick mark in the middle of the road. There's fifty-four to the right. Right there, go up just a little bit to the green and there's a little C to the left now, there's a C. See that C, it's kind of hidden. Right, you're almost there, you're almost there, right there. Anyway, that demonstrates what we call a cut line, so that's the limit of the grading that's happening along that area. So it's, it means cut, you're cutting into the existing ground, that's essentially the tie-in point where the new the new ground meets the existing ground, right? And so that's the limit of work right there, if you follow that right along, it's a few feet inside the right-of-way. Right, so.
One, two, three, four, or six or so trees?
I think it's probably four, maybe five, I think. Um, yeah, it's probably one, two, three, four, five, I don't think those are.
Are you going where it's cut out or are you going where the pointer is now?
One, two, three, four, five. I don't know if the last two will be affected, they may not be.
Is is that going to leave a um like a bank or is it going to be smoothed out?
It's going to, it it's, there's going to be a bit of an embankment because that's what is there today, but it will gradually tie in with a slope and then tie back into the exist- I don't know how to describe it other than. Um, but that's the main area that has vegetation that is going to be impacted by the widening. Um, but further down where we're not really changing the edge of pavement, like it's out there today, it's not curbed, it's the edge of pavement today. There's going to be curb that is put in there, but it's along that edge of pavement, so we're not there's less impact as we go further down.
How far do you think the mast arm is from the and from that land plate?
How far the mast arm is from?
That land plate?
Uh. So from the intersection, it's about two, it's about two hundred and fifty feet.
So two fifty feet in, we're talking about removing up to five trees that are right up on the right up on the roadway and nothing beyond that, so whatever is behind that won't be touched.
Right.
Okay.
And and certainly, they can't go outside the right-of-way. Excuse me?
I'm going out with my tape measure, two hundred and fifty feet.
Well, it's the the mast arm is going where the mast arm is today.
No, no, I understand.
So.
I just, I'm having a hard time picturing the, I I think I know where it is, it's right where the trail comes out.
Is there any homes right there?
I can't, there there may be a backyard for our neighborhood and then there's the, there's a home, there's a home right by Old Bethlehem Pike, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what it'll, that's what it'll affect more than anything else.
So that triangular property is the township's, right? Uh, Jamie, if you, that triangular piece is township property.
It's coming out along the side of the house.
Yes.
And then they brought their own.
I guess the concern is, are we going to be eliminating the natural barrier, sound barrier and visual barrier to the roadway? That, that.
It's open there.
Yeah.
And then you kind of go in this little.
Right.
Again, so you you're not to your neighbor.
Passed it.
Well, once you go into that, your your start, that's the, that's the back end of my neighborhood, once you, once you come, so where you're exposed where the walking trail is exposed to some uh Norris Town Road. When you, once you go into that, once you go into the woods right there, through the trail. Maybe that's the s- just maybe another fifty feet or so is the start of the backyard or to the but but there's, but there's, but the ballers, the ballers are in the middle of the cul-de-sac. There's people who will live, if you're standing on Norris Town Road looking in, there's people who live to the left of the ballers.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's the end of their backyard, yeah, when you come into there, that's their, and you're saying that right there, they're going to lose about five trees or so.
The five trees in the right-of-way, the rest of the trees that you see on that image, those are all existing trees that are not being touched.
Yep. The trees or the yeah, I think they're right, I I I think that's right.
Correct.
It's not going to be anyone's home, that's what I couldn't tell.
There's no home on, that that triangular piece is lower Gwinnett Township property.
Okay.
So the next home where that triangle comes down and runs along the trail, the property line runs along the backside of the trail. If you go below where it says Norris Town Road, Jamie, right there, that's the property line.
That's it, and that's not going to be affected.
That is not going to be affected, those but those trees are not, we are not allowed to touch those trees. We are, those are outside the right-of-way and this project can't do anything outside the right-of-way.
It, is it possible to plant trees, new trees on that little triangle and
That's what I was going to say.
Return the privacy to those folks?
I was going to say, is there any intention of to replant?
Um, there's not in this project to replant, certainly not within the right-of-way, we cannot do that.
Right.
Um, if there was another opportunity for trees to be replaced on the township property in some other fashion, that could certainly be considered. Um, but it's not in the scope of the project right now.
Yeah, I think if the township was interested in doing that, since this is a grant-funded project, it would be best to do that as a separate effort outside of this, but it's something we can certainly work with the township on and.
We got to see what it looks like after it's done to know if there's really a problem that we need to address.
Mm hmm.
But we have tree fund.
Is that triangle of property just bred? We just like mow it?
There may be actually trees, I honestly, I'm not sure what's on the other side of the trail.
There's no, there's no, it's not maintained, do you remember when we did the cleanup in my neighborhood?
Yeah.
That's right there, yeah, it's right.
Okay, so again, our and our survey picked up all of those individual trees and that trail. What's beyond that trail, they they didn't survey pass there.
Okay.
For the purpose of the project, but the trees that you see there were actual survey trees.
Some of the, some, so the, on both the right and the lefts, on the right side coming from Summey Town, so coming from Bethlehem Pike up Norris Town Road. The trees that provide cover are all on the right of the trail. There's nothing to the left of the trail that provides cover into that neighborhood. They're all the trees on the right.
Where is the um the filling station in that?
Trees.
Uh, picture, is it?
It's to the left of the cul-de-sac, yeah, so it's right, right at that location.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying it's what it is.
So wh- while this work is being done, um are we going to have to close some of the lanes to traffic?
So what will happen, there's, there's no detour for the improvements, all the work will be done under a staged construction. So during normal hours, nine to three, there may be lanes that are reduced. Um, traffic will still move through the intersection. Uh, there may be, you know, lane closures at various times depending on the work that's being done during the nine to three period. They're not allowed to do that between six and nine in the morning, they're not allowed to do that between three and seven in the evening. Those are all part of um the plan requirements. Um, so while during the day, there may be some restrictions, nothing is being closed, access to all properties has to be maintained during construction. Um, anybody's driveways, anything like that has to be maintained at any time of day when they're working. Um, and that will be, that will be done, but traffic will continue to move through the intersection. You know, while the contractor is working.
Or um is the work going to be staged on that um township uh lot that's empty? That that seemed like for the first phase, we had a lot of construction vehicles parked there.
Mm hmm. Um, so what happens when the project goes out to bid, the the contractor is required to uh determine their staging area? If they want to try to use any area that's not within the right-of-way or have they, they have to obtain permission to do that, so if they were to come back and say to the township, we'd like to use that corner. Um, they would have to come to the township to request permission to do that.
Okay.
They can't just choose.
Just use it.
They cannot just choose to use anything outside the right-of-way, they they cannot just use on their own, they have to ask permission um and be, you know, approved to to use those areas. So that's, that'll be one of their first um jobs, whoever whoever wins the project.
Okay.
And those are all items that are addressed during what we have as our pre-construction meeting.
Mm hmm. Just understanding the congestion that typically happens now without any construction. Um, I know that you talked about the staging and multiple stages stages happening simultaneously if it allows for traffic flow. Like what's, what's the measurement for determining traffic flow, meaning right now, there's no construction and you can sit for a good twenty minutes if you're coming whichever direction. It does depend on the time of day, so I guess.
Which is why the nine to three is in, is required.
Is it nine to three when they start work or nine to three when they start staging?
They cannot.
Because.
They cannot reduce travel lanes, they cannot close lanes, they cannot change the traffic flow out there during peak hours, so they could shut down a lane at nine o'clock and have flagging operations, whatever they need to do to be able to access the area that they're working. Um, but up till nine o'clock, they could work from the edge of road over.
Right, but if 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 they're parking all their vehicles on the shoulder of Norris Town Road at eight o'clock.
They can't do that.
Okay.
They can't do that, because that would be restricting a lane.
Well, I'm saying.
Essentially, yeah, but there's not much, there's, there's a little room out there, but there's, they can't, they can't comfortably park their their vehicles get out and do what they need to do, so if there's any impact to the travel lane, they cannot do that.
And so if that occurs, are we reaching out to you, reaching out to PennDOT?
Yeah, so this job is going to have a full-time, essentially a full-time inspection out there, so um between the onsite inspectors plus our construction manager. He's, he's going to be the main contact.
Okay.
On a daily basis, um and any issues get raised and he will be required, obviously, to put them on notice and deal with the circumstances. They're used to it. Um, they'll. Um, they'll, they'll, they'll make it happen, but the point is, is there's no detour. Traffic will flow. It, it, it's going to feel like it's a construction zone. I will say, if they do some of these stages concurrently, it will shorten the duration. So it's a trade-off. You know, maybe, maybe they can do some of the stages concurrently and that will help things move along. Obviously, mother nature is also a factor. So, um, the good thing is many of the poles have already been relocated. So that's a, a fantastic effort because utilities can often, you know, take time for these types of projects. The fact that the poles are moved now, it's a matter of, you know, getting everybody to move their lines as well. So, and that's all, that is all built into the, into the contract and, um, what, you know, what they're, they're used to having to deal with.
And what we do, like the township will do a notice to residents before they start, like an email or, or something, just giving people the heads up.
Yeah.
Chad, is there anything I missed that you would like me to point out?
I will, um, just mention that location. There is some tree trimming at this location at the Beetle property. Um, she does have a temporary construction easement. Um, it is for site distance at her driveway. Uh, there is a requirement on the plan that we have a field meeting with the inspector, the contractor, the township staff, or township representatives, us and the property owner to review, uh, any trimming or removal of vegetation to obtain her required site distance. So that has to happen during the project before anything is, is trimmed out there to minimize, obviously, what, what needs to come down. But we are obligated to give, make sure she has acceptable site distance out of her driveway. And she, I, I talked with her many times and, and understands that that's what's, that's what needs to be done there. And I think that's it.
Okay.
I'll pass it over to Chad.
Thank you.
Okay, part two. Um, the one thing we wanted to do is give the board an update, uh, this evening on some upcoming pedestrian improvements, um, for McKean Road. Uh, these are improvements that have, um, been discussed for some time now, dating back, um, all the way to late two thousand nineteen when Spring House Innovation Park, uh, was before the township, uh, with proposals, um, for their property. Um, can I go to the next slide, Jamie? Um, as part of that land development approval process, um, Spring House Innovation Park, uh, made commitments to the township to implement certain, uh, pedestrian related improvements to the McKean Road corridor to address concerns that were raised by the township and the residents along the corridor in regards to, uh, pedestrian safety and interaction with vehicles along the corridor. Um, there is quite a bit of pedestrian activity along the corridor and there was some improvements that are identified. Um, it's sort of a first step to improve, uh, conditions along the corridor. Uh, this slide here just shows an aerial shot of the entire corridor from Norris Town Road on your left-hand side of the screen to Welsh Road on the right-hand screen. And the improvements that were committed to, uh, were two pedestrian crossings, uh, one at Stonehouse Road on the southern end of the corridor and one at the Amber Area YMCA on the northern end. And in conjunction with that, um, there will also be radar permanent radar speed display signs, um, installed, uh, one on the northern end for southbound traffic as it, uh, travels towards the three oh nine overpass. And another one on the southern end of the corridor for northbound traffic, um, in the area of the Spring House, uh, Innovation Park. And I'll get into some details for each one of these now. Uh, so for the first one, the pedestrian crossing, uh, it's Stonehouse Road on the bottom is a, is a, a street view, um, of the intersection, uh, facing north with, um, with, uh, Stonehouse Road on the left-hand side of the picture. Above is the construction plan, uh, view of the area between Spring House Farm Lane and Stonehouse Road. Uh, the improvements, um, at this, uh, pedestrian crossing that will be installed include providing a painted, uh, crosswalk, um, on the southern side of the intersection. Or if you're looking at the street view, the near side, um, of the intersection, um, extending uh, from Stonehouse Road across, um, McKean. As part of that, there'll be a new, um, spur constructed um, to get you from the crosswalk to the existing trail, um, on the ship, uh, property. Um, to accompany the pedestrian crossing, uh, there'll be pedestrian warning signs in advance of the crossing uh, from each direction of travel on McKean Road. Uh, there will also be, um, in each direction, and you can see one on the left-hand side, um, pet, uh, pet ahead pavement marking, uh, legend for additional advanced notification of the pedestrian crossing. Um, there'll be ADA compliant ramps build at the, at the crossing and also on both corners of Stonehouse Road, there's ADA ramps there now. Uh, but they don't meet current, um, ADA, um, standards. So those will be upgraded as well. Uh, the other thing, um, that will be done here is one of the, um, radar speed display signs. Um, in the picture at the bottom of the screen, um, it'll be a little bit before that first utility pole um, that you see, um, on the eastern side or the northbound side of McKean Road. If you go up to the engineering plan, um, where it says legal traffic signal easement, that's where the, the speed display sign will be installed, um, about equidistant um, between, um, the Spring House Farm Lane and Stonehouse, um, road intersections. Just provided a little, um, construction detail on the side of, of what that radar speed display, display sign typically uh, looks like. It'll have the speed limit sign at the top and then the digital display uh, below where with each card will display the speed, um, that they're traveling at. They're traveling below or at the speed limit. It'll just come up, um, with the speed they're traveling. They're traveling over the speed limit.
Probably red and blue.
It'll flash, um, and then I believe there's an option with the equipment if they get above, um, a certain speed.
Um, police.
We can, um, an instant, yeah, an instant buzz to their, to the, to the department. Um, I believe there's a setting, um, that, that can be, um, programmed if it gets above a spur, a certain speed that, um, the message slowed down, um, up on the display.
People are gonna try and get that in.
Um, so the next area is the pedestrian crossing at the YMCA. Um, as you're probably aware, there's currently a pedestrian crossing right in the area of the three oh nine overpass. Um, the visibility of that isn't the greatest and it, it's been a concern, um, that's been raised, uh, in the past. So the thought was to move it to a location that was more visible and, um, the air, the entrance of the YMCA, uh, was a logical, uh, place to do that. So this is a little bit different. Um, it's going to involve, um, some more things than the Stonehouse Road crossing. Um, there will be the painted crosswalk, um, on, um, the far side of the intersection uh, where you see the Gore area currently and the monument sign for spring, for the, for the YMCA. The pedestrian crossing will extend across there. Um, it will have ADA compliant ramps on each side. It will connect to the sidewalk on, uh, close by on the east side of McKean Road. Um, there'll also be, it's, it's hidden by the, the zoom screen up top there, but there'll also be, um, a spur connection built back to the trail on the YMCA property as well. Um, to make that, um, connection, the existing, uh, crossing near the overpass, uh, will be removed. And, um, we'll probably want to get some information out on the township website. Um, ahead of that, just so people know, um, that this is where the crossing will be now. Um, but what makes this crossing different from Stonehouse Road, um, one is due to the width of McKean Road. In this area, um, Pendott required a pedestrian refuge island, um, in the middle of McKean Road, which is that sort of, um, oval area you see on the engineering drawing, um, on the right-hand side. Um, of the screen. So there'll be a pedestrian refuge island there. And then this crossing will have flashing devices, um, which the Stonehouse Road crossing will not have. Um, so the, the flashing devices will be a combination of, um, underneath the screen or underneath the picture, you see on the right-hand side, a pedestal mounted flasher that'll be installed on each side of the crossing. Um, and then there'll be an overhead flasher, um, also installed that'll be centered, um, on the island and on, um, McKean Road. The pedestal flasher will also be, um, installed on, um, the, the pedestrian refuge island as well. Um, and these will flash, um, they'll flash when they're activated by a pedestrian, by a push button system. And then, uh, for a period of time and then turn back off. Um, after that time, it won't be, um, a constant, um, flashing, uh, that goes on and on, be pedestrian um, activated. Um.
They activate it with a push button, so like.
Correct, correct. So the, the timing for construction, we just checked in today, um, with the contractor that was selected, um, by ship. Um, there's one easement, um, that needs to be executed yet. The ball's in their court um, to do that, but we expect it to be done soon. Um, once that easement is executed, the contractor's ready to go. Um, they have all the equipment and materials in hand, um, and they'll be able to get started immediately. Um, you know, whether this time of year might be a little bit of an issue to deal with. Um, but they're estimating that, um, the work at both crossings can, uh, be done in approximately five weeks. Um, once they get started.
Are they going to be done simultaneously?
Um, they haven't shared yet with us whether the, they'll be done simultaneously. Um, there's ADA ramp work that they might start first. Um, and then, um, install the, the flasher equipment and put the crossings in after that. Um, so once they're get, getting ready to start, um, they'll share that information. There is a possibility that they could work on them simultaneously. The, the work, uh, you know, other than the ADA ramp work at Stonehouse Road, that's rather, um, rather simple work and will take a lot of time. So that's the schedule we're looking at right now. Any, any questions on the pedestrian improvements? Okay. And then the other thing we just wanted to give a real quick update on. Um, we are getting started on the McKean Road Master Plan. Um, this is a study that, that it also has been talked about, uh, for some time and is finally, um, getting off the ground. It was held up by, by a number of factors, but, uh, we're finally going to get moving on it. And this is a planning study to, um, address issues along McKean Road um, related to traffic speeds, um, safe pedestrian access, um, and facilities. Um, initially, the improvements that I just reviewed were to be part of the master plan, but we were able to move those ahead of, um, the study um, getting started. So that was, that was nice, but, um, it'll evaluate the entire corridor for traffic calming and pedestrian improvements. Uh, the other focus of, um, the study will be, um, what, um, access should look like at the ship, uh, driveway on McKean Road and also, um, the YMCA and Jansen area of McKean Road in terms of different alternatives that might be available, uh, for lanes and traffic control um, and those type of things. We'll also look at, um, the McKean Road approach to Norris Town Road. Currently, there are separate left and right turn lanes there. They're not real long and they're going to have to be, uh, lengthened at some point in the future. Um, more likely than not to, to accommodate traffic, um, efficiently to help get traffic through the intersection. So we'll take a look at that as well. The study does not include any type of evaluation of uh, Norris Town Road or the Welsh Road corridors. It's focused strictly, um, on McKean Road. Um, we will develop some concept plans for the ship access and the Jansen YMCA access area uh, from the results that come out of our traffic analysis. And then we'll develop some, um, initial planning level cost estimates for different, um, improvements that are identified in the study and really that the intent of the plan is a sort of serve, is a guide going forward. Um, if things, um, uh, develop further on the ship property, if Jansen has expansion, um, or if the township would like to pursue grant opportunities, uh, for any improvements, um, along the corridor in the future. So, um, just wanted to give a quick overview of what we'll be, uh, working on, uh, for the master plan. And we'll certainly keep you updated as that progresses.
Only a question I have, I guess, is from the Keen Road site typically, is the timeframes?
Um, we're looking at about four to six weeks to get through our initial traffic analysis. Um, then we'll want to review those raw, results with, with the township and with staff to talk through that and see, um, you know, what some of the results are telling us and things that we want to consider uh, for potential improvements. So we'll have a little bit of a review period there. And then, and then once we think we have a set of improvements, um, that we want to move forward, then we'll prepare the conceptual plans and cost estimates and we estimate that would, um, take about six to eight weeks. Um, so that's a general timeframe, you know, could move around a little bit based on, you know, meetings and, and those type of things.
You think you would be able to conduct this though before we kind of have school let out, like just so we get a fair, accurate assessment of what the traffic looks like with school traffic and.
Yeah, we, we've actually already been out collecting data. Um, so we already have that in hand. Um, is, is our baseline. And then, um, the next step in terms of our traffic analysis is to work through um, some future projections of what traffic, uh, might look like in terms of volumes, um, you know, a few years down the road.
And are those future projections, I assume, taking into account the potential plans on ships' property?
Correct.
Chad, um, can you remind me, is, uh, is Chip paying for these pedestrian crosswalks?
The improvements I reviewed earlier, yes, those are being paid for and installed by a contractor hired by, um, ship. And then in terms of the McKean Road Master Plan, um, that work is being, uh, funded through contributions made by ship, uh, Jansen, um, and then township funds as well.
Any additional questions? Any questions from the public? Our one public?
No?
Okay.
Thank you so much, Chad.
Thank you. Thanks, Chad.
Appreciate it. Um, next up is our discussion about our special events process and notifications. And I think I'm going to turn it over to our manager.
Thank you. Um, just wanted to follow up from the discussion that took place at the last meeting about a special events ordinance. The board was asking questions about whether an ordinance perhaps was overkill. And so the, there'd been a number of staff discussions in the last couple of weeks and the consensus is that the, the staff thinks an ordinance is overkill, so agrees with your instincts. There is a need for a tighter process and notifications and that was already underway. I think, um, we probably will be coming with you possibly with some changes to the fee resolutions and things like that, that would be cleanup items, but not ordinance requirements, we don't think anyway, and certainly not as a whole special event. And certainly not as a whole special events ordinance. As we go through that, if we find things, I don't want to say it's not possible. There aren't any little requirements here and there, an amendment to an existing ordinance or something like that. Don't think so right now, but so we're gonna, the staff's recommendation is just that we that proceed with a procedural review, come up with that, we can show you, you know, present that to the board if you'd like to see it, or just include it in the manager's report so you're aware of it and see how that works.
Questions to the board?
No, that I think that sounds great. Thank you.
I just, I guess I would add, I know that the parking record taken a lot of time to go over this for many, 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 many years. Maybe if we just communicate with them that this is kind of administratively going to be handled and moving forward, but thank them for their time and discourse on the subject matter. I'll just say thank you. Awesome. Next up is the authorization to advertise bid for paving of the parking lot at Pen Amber Park, included in the manager's report from engineer where the request authors authorize nation to advertise the bid for the Pen Amber Park Improvement Project. It goes into the improvement that include that include regrading asphalt trail repairs and new parking lot line stripping. The anticipating that the builds would go out by the end of February, and then the bid opening of the project will end at the will be held at the end of March with consideration awarded in April Board of Supervisors meeting. So this is just for us to authorize the advertisement for that program. But I may have gone out of order. I did. So hold that for a second. First step is the crest to authorize and advertise for our actual road program, and it's the annual paving program. And that includes a whole plethora of project locations in 2023 with the Mill and Overlay project and alternates. I don't know if there are any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? The timeline included and is anticipated, these bids also will go out by the end of February in the bid opening. It will be held at March 30th, 2023 with considerations to be awarded the first meeting in our April or April Board of Supervisors. Are there are there any additional questions from anyone? If not, I'm going to make a recommendation to authorize the advertising for the annual paving program. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries. Now, back to the other thing I was talking about, the specific paving program at the parking lot at the Pen Amber Park. It's following the same timeline. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? I put forward a motion to authorize advertisement of the bid paving program for the parking lot at Pen Amber Road, um, Pen Amber Park. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the approval of the minutes from our January 25th, 2023 meeting. They're included in our managers packet. Are there any questions from the board? Being not up at fourth, a motion to approve the minutes from our January 25th, 2023 meeting, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. There's four, four, no, there's three approvals and one exception. Thank you. Next up is committee reports, which are updates from to our subcommittees. Let's start with human relations.
The Human Relations Committee met, they are working on completing a complaint form and completing sort of user-friendly policies and procedures that they can put on the website and otherwise publish to the public that they are aware of sort of how to, you know, commence proceedings under the ordinance. They are also very actively attending other events and human, you know, put on by other human relations commissions throughout the area to sort of get a sense of where what other committees are doing and how they can partner. They've also reached out to various organizations within Lower Guanin to sort of, you know, come up with ways that they can partner to put on programming and sort of raise awareness for these issues. And we're getting going. Parks and Rec met and
So just to, before you jump, the next human relations meeting is not till March 2nd?
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
And there's always a Zoom option, too, if you can't come in person.
Janine? Has the public interacted with the committee yet? Have you started having cases?
No, I mean, we don't, they haven't finalized a complaint form. Their idea is to like get it on the website so it's easy for people to file a complaint. Should there be one? But no, there hasn't been any. You know, any complaint filed.
We have had members of the public attend the meeting.
Sure, yep.
Okay. So there will be a point at which you'll really advertise this and say it's in place and now it's available for
I mean, the the committee's been advertised, I think, in the newsletters and people have come to the Zooms. The people know that the committee is here, but right, I mean, once there's a actual link to a complaint and those policies and procedures, they're going to work with staff on coming up with the best way to share that information, the residents and local businesses.
And and you anticipate that's this quarter that you'll be ready?
I, yeah, I have two meetings, I think.
Okay. Thanks.
You were saying Park and Rec?
Parks and Rec, Park and Rec met. I think the one main takeaway from that meeting to share with you guys is or end to share with the public is just that we're actively working on the park's strategic plan. And we're going to be meeting with Gilmore, who's putting together a proposal for us. And then there will be, just for the public to be on the lookout for, we're going to have some public forums so that the community can come in and give their input on the ideas that we're throwing out there for our redesigning and updating our park.
Yes, the EAC is next, and that shore wants to talk.
EAC, EAC met last night. The lion's share of the time was spent just getting the calendar together, getting the events, the what, when, and who. There's a lot of great stuff planned for the year, and that should be finalized before the next meeting or after the next meeting, which is March 7th. The AC also discussed the flag log ordinance and the clear cutting ordinance, and there were no comments from
Awesome. The next, I don't think there was any additional meetings. Historic meets February 16th, which is next Thursday. Yeah. Awesome. Updates from staff on any municipal activities or projects? No?
Last week, I was invited by Pastor Kwan at Bethel Baptist Church to what I thought was a roundtable meeting turned into a packed audience at Bethelor Synagogue. And it was in reference to the Trey Nichols murder in Memphis. It was well-attended. Did have an opportunity to speak and then engaged with a lot of people afterwards. And there was, there's actually been two follow-up meetings at Starbucks in Spring House, so it's couldn't be any closer. So I I attended the second one, I attended the first meeting at Starbucks, and I sent some of our officers to Monday's follow-up meeting. And both of them, the one I went to was in the morning, thirty to forty people show up at Starbucks, and then on Monday, it was an afternoon meeting, and I had about twenty people at that. So perception is strong of what we're fighting, and these meetings mean a lot to a lot of people. So they they've been very, very good, very well received.
Thank you for attending and representing lower one at those meetings.
I sent everybody, I apologize, I I did send everybody an email. I did not know that everybody was invited. I would have let you know ahead of time. There was, it's the Whistaken Faith Alliance.
They did ask me to speak individually, but I was unable. It was a conflict.
Okay, good. Well, not good, but good, at least at least you know. So it's a, it's a community of probably about a dozen churches in different faiths that meet when something like this happens. So it was, it was really, it was really nice.
Thank you. Any additional? You want to talk about the complaint at all?
We had our first meeting last week, and I think we covered a lot of territory. I actually think the people from the planning commission were a little surprised at how much input they walked away with. But we just covered the basis, and we kind of looked at the Beacon Properties, got feedback from them. They provided, you know, a little bit of statistics, demographics for the township, and just kind of gave an overview of of, you know, what the process would be like. I thought that the representatives on the committee, I thought that they gave a lot of input. And I think I think it's a good group, so I think they're going to end up coming up with a good project at the end.
I agree. Anyone else? Next supervisor comments, Tessie?
Uh, no comments.
Janine? Opener?
Mike?
That's all I have to say.
I mean, I think that's the only thing we should say is go first. With that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'll hold those in favor. Well, I didn't do a second. Who's going to second? All those in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah, 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 I heard. I heard you got screwed.